It's gonna be big.
Well. Yes.
Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Pecosin City Board Meeting for September 17th. We'd like to welcome Mr. A.J. Loumoggi as our student representative. This is his first meeting, so welcome aboard. We're glad you're here, and we'll go ahead and call you to the podium.
Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now for a moment of silence. Please be seated. For today, September 17th, today is National Constitution Day, when the Constitution was drafted in 1787, 237 years ago, so our quote is by the writer of the Constitution, James Madison. "Knowledge will forever govern ignorance, and the people who mean to be their own governors must arm themselves with the power which knowledge gives." Thank you.
Ms. Carroll, are there any additions or modifications to the agenda?
Chair Martin, there are no additions or modifications.
Thank you. Ms. Purdy?
Chair Martin, members of the board, community members and colleagues, thank you for being here this evening. We have one recognition of our dedicated service of two of our outgoing school board members. We'd like to thank them for their leadership and commitment for our school division. At this time, I'd like to invite Chair Martin forward to provide a token of our gratitude. Mr. Ingram. And Mr. Childers couldn't be here tonight, but we will make sure that we get his gift to him as well.
On behalf of the Pecosin City Board and City Department, we thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Ingram, can I get a quick picture? Sorry, you ran away. And the clapping was too loud. Yeah.
Thank you very much to both of you for your service. That concludes our recognitions for the evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Hyde? Ms. Hyde will be doing our instructional update.
Good evening, Chair Martin, Vice Chair Burbidge, distinguished board members in our community. Thank you for joining us tonight. I have the pleasure of delivering the instructional updates, which will include some back-to-school staffing, our 23-24 academic outcomes, changes regarding standards and the accountability system, and our partnership with Virginia Peninsula Community College and College Now coming to Pecosin City Public Schools. In regards to staffing, we are proud to report that we are 98% fully staffed in the middle of a teacher crisis shortage, so that's something that we're pretty proud of. We are going to continue to recruit highly qualified, classified, and certified staff to support our buildings and our operations. We shared this last time, but we are fully accredited without conditions again for the 24-25 school year. As you can see, Pecosin continues to perform higher than Virginia state average by 12% or more in all categories. You can see at the bottom, we also have listed our composite score of 84, which is 13% above the state at a 71. Social Studies with 18%, near and dear to my heart. And here's another comparison, again, the same information, just in the chart format, showing that we are outperforming the state, and we are performing very similar to how we performed last year as well. Now, this chart compares our regional, our neighboring regions. Again, you can see that Pecosin is at the top, outperforming many in the region in all subjects. The state doesn't rank divisions, but using composite scores, here are the top five in the state, and as you can see, we remain in the top five, tied with York County at 84%. And this score is a combination of all of the assessment data that you just saw, the reading, the math, the social studies, the science, and the writing. So now, we're gonna dig a little bit deeper into the school quality indicators. Pecosin Primary School has earned Level 1 for all indicators, and as we shared before, the primary school reduced their chronic absenteeism by 10%, to 10%, excuse me, a reduction of 11%. Pecosin Elementary School has also earned Level 1 in all indicators, and they reduced their chronic absenteeism by 50% compared to the previous school year. Pecosin Middle School has also earned a Level 1 in all indicators and reduced their chronic absenteeism by 50% as well. For the high school, the overall performance remains the same, however, we do have a few opportunities for growth and improvement. Chronic absenteeism and the performance of our students with disability remains an area of focus for us. The high school is creating targeted goals around both of these areas to ensure progress. In regards to chronic absenteeism, Pecosin High School continues to work to increase student engagement and communicate with families regarding the importance of attendance. The procedures for responding to absences and the communication plan is being reviewed and enhanced to ensure we're reporting as accurately as possible. In addition, we're pleased to share that the state has provided more guidance on how to remove absences with flexible seat time. For example, students in high school completing seat time before or after school or on Saturdays for three hours can reduce their absences by one day for up to 15 days. Our schools across all grade levels, not just Pecosin High School, will work to utilize this flexible seat time as appropriate to reduce chronic absenteeism and ensure students have access to the content that they missed, which is most important. Another area that we're continuing to work on is the College Career and Civic Readiness Index. In Virginia's accreditation system, this is a performance indicator designed to measure how well high schools prepare students for life beyond graduation. It assesses whether students are ready for post-secondary education, careers, or civic life based on several key indicators. Advanced coursework, completion of AP, honors or dual enrollment, career and technical education, CTE, industry certifications, state licenses, or credentials that prepare students for the workforce. Work-based learning, participation in internships, apprenticeships, or other work-based learning experiences. Military or civic readiness, students who enlist in the military or demonstrate civic readiness through service learning projects, voting, or leadership roles. And college readiness exams, performance on standardized college readiness exams like SAT, ACT, or other college admissions tests. We did see growth in this indicator compared to 22-23, however. In 22-23, we had a score of 80%, and we are now reporting a score of 84%, so a 4% increase. To note, a Level 1 is 85%, so we are just right there. We have already provided the data to the high school on students who still need to meet this indicator, and they are going to be working with students and families to ensure there's an opportunity in one of these areas. As a school system, we have increased enrollment in AP, honors, and dual enrollment courses. For example, in 22-23, we had 861 enrollments. Now, that's not unique students, that's enrollments in these courses. In advanced courses total, the student enrollment was 683, so 861 enrollment, 683 students. In 23-24, we increased that by 18 enrollments, but our population actually reduced, so we had a higher number of enrollments based on the student population. This year, we're already tracking to be much higher than that, and I'd like to come back to you in October as schedules are still balancing out where students have the opportunity to make changes last year, but our numbers are looking much higher than that already this year for these advanced coursework classes. In addition to more enrollments, because that is great, but the supports also have to be in place to make sure that these students are successful. So the high school has the One Lunch Program, where students can seek academic assistance during this extended lunch period to ensure they are successful. In the area of special education, we are increasing the number of data reports available to our staff for more frequent updates regarding student progress, to allow for those course corrections sooner rather than later. We're also working to restructure the way in which we use our division-level special education staff to ensure they have more opportunities to provide support in the classroom where that support is actually needed. And again, chronic absenteeism is a measure of students who miss 10% or more of the school year. As a reminder, we saw an overall decrease in chronic absenteeism. We largely attribute this to the use of parent square and other homeschool communications. As I mentioned before, we will work to use the flexible seat time guidelines to increase student access to content and reduce chronic absenteeism. So what are our next steps with this? Using the systems we currently have in place, we will refine the process in which we monitor and disaggregate data. This will allow for more frequent data conversations and allow teachers to drill down to specific skills. With more frequent conversations, course corrections can be made sooner. We also still have all-in tutoring funds, and this will allow schools to offer that just-in-time support through tutoring before, during, and after school, which we now know we can also tap into that flexible seat time. And again, using that data that we're going to now disaggregate to push in to support that tutoring process as well. We are continuing to build our curriculum in math and language arts. As the year progresses, teachers have the opportunity to provide feedback on the created curriculum and make adjustments based on the observed implementation and student mastery data. In particular, we'll focus on our unique populations of students, such as those being served in special education and gifted, to ensure the adjustments are made to support their progress and mastery as well. Schools are currently refining their school improvement plans to ensure these areas of growth are included, their teachers are informed of the data, and there are targeted strategies in place. We are also currently using Lexia and ExactPath platforms, which provide diagnostic assessments and also pathways for students, excuse me, to practice skills that they need support on. Sorry, I just lost my voice all of a sudden. So those platforms will create unique pathways for students based off their diagnostic assessments. And as always, we're refining our professional learning plans to ensure professional learning based on data that our staff would need. All right, so we're gonna go over the changes to state standards and the accountability system. We have talked about this before, but we will, we are currently implementing the Math K-12 and the English K-12 new standards. Virginia recently adopted new standards for reading and math. The new standards will be implemented and first assessed in the 24-25 school year, so this is
The pleasure of delivering the instructional updates, which will include some back-to-school staffing, our 23-24 academic outcomes, changes regarding standards and the accountability system, and our partnership with Virginia Peninsula Community College and College Now coming to Pecosin City Public Schools. In regards to staffing, we are proud to report that we are 98% fully staffed in the middle of a teacher crisis shortage. So that's something that we're pretty proud of. We are going to continue to recruit highly qualified, classified, and certified staff to support our buildings and our operations. We shared this last time, but we are fully accredited without conditions again for the 24-25 school year. As you can see, Pecosin continues to perform higher than Virginia state average by 12% or more in all categories. You can see at the bottom, we also have listed our composite score of 84, which is 13% above the state at a 71. Social Studies with 18%, near and dear to my heart. And here's another comparison. Again, the same information, just in the chart format showing that we are outperforming the state. And we are performing very similar to how we performed last year as well. Now, this chart compares our regional, our neighboring regions. Again, you can see that Pecosin is at the top, outperforming many in the region in all subjects. The state doesn't rank divisions, but using composite scores, here are the top five in the state. And as you can see, we remain in the top five, tied with York County at 84%. And this score is a combination of all of the assessment data that you just saw, the reading, the math, the social studies of science, and the writing. So now, we're going to dig a little bit deeper into the school quality indicators. Pecosin Primary School has earned Level 1 for all indicators. And as we shared before, the primary school reduced their chronic absenteeism by 10% to 10%, excuse me, a reduction of 11%. Pecosin Elementary School has also earned Level 1 in all indicators, and they reduced their chronic absenteeism by 50% compared to the previous school year. Pecosin Middle School has also earned a Level 1 in all indicators and reduced their chronic absenteeism by 50% as well. For the high school, the overall performance remains the same. However, we do have a few opportunities for growth and improvement. Chronic absenteeism and the performance of our students with disability remains an area of focus for us. The high school is creating targeted goals around both of these areas to ensure progress. In regards to chronic absenteeism, Pecosin High School continues to work to increase student engagement and communicate with families regarding the importance of attendance. The procedures for responding to absences and the communication plan is being reviewed and enhanced to ensure we're reporting as accurately as possible. In addition, we're pleased to share that the state has provided more guidance on how to remove absences with flexible seat time. For example, students in high school completing seat time before or after school or on Saturdays for three hours can reduce their absences by one day for up to 15 days. Our schools across all grade levels, not just Pecosin High School, will work to utilize this flexible seat time as appropriate to reduce chronic absenteeism and ensure students have access to the content that they missed, which is most important. Another area that we're continuing to work on is the College Career and Civic Readiness Index. In Virginia's accreditation system, this is a performance indicator designed to measure how well high schools prepare students for life beyond graduation. It assesses whether students are ready for post-secondary education, careers, or civic life based on several key indicators: advanced coursework, completion of AP, honors or dual enrollment, career and technical education, CTE, industry certifications, state licenses, or credentials that prepare students for the workforce; work-based learning, participation in internships, apprenticeships, or other work-based learning experiences; military or civic readiness, students who enlist in the military or demonstrate civic readiness through service learning projects, voting, or leadership roles; and college readiness exams, performance on standardized college readiness exams like SAT, ACT, or other college admissions tests. We did see growth in this indicator compared to 22-23, however. In 22-23, we had a score of 80%, and we are now reporting a score of 84%, so a 4% increase. To note, a Level 1 is 85%, so we are just right there. We have already provided the data to the high school on students who still need to meet this indicator, and they are going to be working with students and families to ensure there's an opportunity in one of these areas. As a school system, we have increased enrollment in AP, honors, and dual enrollment courses. For example, in 22-23, we had 861 enrollments. Now, that's not unique students. That's enrollments in these courses. In advanced courses total, the student enrollment was 683. So 861 enrollment, 683 students. In 23-24, we increased that by 18 enrollments, but our population actually reduced. So we had a higher number of enrollments based on the student population. This year, we're already tracking to be much higher than that, and I'd like to come back to you in October as schedules are still balancing out where students have the opportunity to make changes last year. But our numbers are looking much higher than that already this year for these advanced coursework classes. In addition to more enrollments, because that is great, but the supports also have to be in place to make sure that these students are successful. So the high school has the One Lunch Program where students can seek academic assistance during this extended lunch period to ensure they are successful. In the area of special education, we are increasing the number of data reports available to our staff for more frequent updates regarding student progress to allow for those course corrections sooner rather than later. We're also working to restructure the way in which we use our division-level special education staff to ensure they have more opportunities to provide support in the classroom where that support is actually needed. And again, chronic absenteeism is a measure of students who miss 10% or more of the school year. As a reminder, we saw an overall decrease in chronic absenteeism. We largely attribute this to the use of Parent Square and other homeschool communications. As I mentioned before, we will work to use the flexible seat time guidelines to increase student access to content and reduce chronic absenteeism. So what are our next steps with this? Using the systems we currently have in place, we will refine the process in which we monitor and disaggregate data. This will allow for more frequent data conversations and allow teachers to drill down to specific skills. With more frequent conversations, course corrections can be made sooner. We also still have all-in tutoring funds, and this will allow schools to offer that just-in-time support through tutoring before, during, and after school, which we now know we can also tap into that flexible seat time. And again, using that data that we're going to now disaggregate to push in to support that tutoring process as well. We are continuing to build our curriculum in math and language arts. As the year progresses, teachers have the opportunity to provide feedback on the created curriculum and make adjustments based on the observed implementation and student mastery data. In particular, we'll focus on our unique populations of students, such as those being served in special education and gifted, to ensure the adjustments are made to support their progress and mastery as well. Schools are currently refining their school improvement plans to ensure these areas of growth are included, their teachers are informed of the data, and there are targeted strategies in place. We are also currently using Lexia and ExactPath platforms, which provide diagnostic assessments and also pathways for students, excuse me, to practice skills that they need support on. Sorry, I just lost my voice all of a sudden. So those platforms will create unique pathways for students based off their diagnostic assessments. And as always, we're refining our professional learning plans to ensure professional learning based on data that our staff would need. All right, so we're going to go over the changes to state standards and the accountability system. We have talked about this before, but we will, we are currently implementing the math K-12 and the English K-12 new standards. Virginia recently adopted new standards for reading and math. The new standards will be implemented and first assessed in the 24-25 school year, so this year. The Virginia Department of Education will be conducting standard setting in late 2024 with the Virginia Board of Education adopting new assessment cut scores in late 2025. The Virginia Department of Education will review and adjust the long-term goals and measures of interim progress in a future amendment following the approval of new cut scores and an analysis of the baseline data. So we'll come back to you with how that's going to change. You should have received a packet. This is just for your reference because I will go over the new accountability. So it's just a little bit more for you to look at as we're reviewing it. So this is still in draft mode. It has not been finalized by the VDOE, but we will present on it just so we have an idea of what is to come. This new school performance and support framework will score school divisions in areas of mastery, growth, readiness, and graduation depending on the grade level. Schools identified as distinguished are exceeding the state's expectation for growth, achievement, and readiness. These schools will serve as models of best practices from which others can learn. Schools identified as on-track are meeting the state's expectation for growth, achievement, and readiness. These schools will have access to general state supports and may also receive support for student groups. Schools as identified as off-track are not meeting the state's expectation for growth, achievement, or readiness. These schools will receive additional support from the VDOE. And finally, schools identified as needing intensive support are significantly not meeting the expectations for growth, achievement, and readiness. And these schools will receive more intensive support, Tier 3, from the VDOE. At this time, we still are waiting final adoption of this new framework. Here are the categories in which we will be scored and how they will be weighted. Elementary and middle schools will be scored on mastery, growth, and readiness, whereas high schools will be scored on mastery, readiness, and graduation. Mastery includes performance on their reading SOL, including the integrated reading and writing component, VAP tests, math SOL in the math VAP test, science SOL, as well as progress in achievement and English language proficiency. For elementary and middle school, growth also includes expected growth in reading and math. Readiness in elementary school and middle school includes chronic absenteeism, the five Cs, which is critical thinking, creative thinking, collaboration, communication, and citizenship, and advanced coursework in middle school. Readiness in high school includes chronic absenteeism, the six-year extended-year graduation rate with applied studies, and the Ready for Life 3E framework. Additionally, high schools will be scored on their graduation rates using the federal graduation indicator. The Ready for Life 3E readiness framework focuses on students graduating high school ready for enrollment, employment, and/or enlistment. Schools will attain points for students that meet defined expectations across enrollment, such as dual credit or credit-bearing coursework, employment, high-demand, industry-recognized credentials, and enlistment, scores on military assessments. This will take the place of the CCCRI indicator that I referenced in this framework. So moving on to our work in our advanced coursework. As you know, we had our first student graduate from Virginia Peninsula Community College in 2023. This school year, we have two students starting the course requirements to complete an associate's degree or equivalent by high school graduation. As PCPS has been building this initiative, which we are calling College Now for a couple of years, we took the next steps to reach the finish line by creating a formal partnership with Virginia Peninsula Community College. Key staff from PCPS recently met with the president of Virginia Peninsula Community College, Dr. Brandon, and members of her team to discuss our partnership. The goal of College Now is to offer enough college courses that result in an associate's degree or the equivalent to a cohort of PCPS students starting in the 25-26 school year. We have additional sessions planned with Virginia Peninsula Community College to explore the cost, delivery models, size, and requirements of the cohort. Collaboratively, we will plan pathways of study, ensure a shared responsibility of student success, provide support with onboarding and orientation of students, staff, and parents, and ensure the homeschool connection between all campuses is solidified. As we progress with this collaborative planning approach, we will provide updates, information to inform the budget process for the coming school year. Not only is this an excellent opportunity for our students, it will help ensure we meet the requirements of the new 3Es in that accreditation system. And this slide just shows the possibilities for the pathways, delivery pathways, or delivery models. So our own teachers becoming dual enrollment certified, our students going to the Virginia Peninsula Community College campus, professors coming to our campus, or students participating in virtual. And all of those options will be fleshed out a little bit more in our coming meetings. PCPS is committed to expanding opportunities for students to engage in advanced coursework through a variety of pathways, not just College Now. From the 22-23 school year to the 23-24, we did see that increase in student participation in dual enrollment, advanced placement, and honors. Looking ahead, and as we start College Now, we are excited to announce the addition of accelerated history and science courses to the program of studies for the 25-26 school year. These courses, offered in sixth and seventh grades, will provide students who are ready for that opportunity to take high school-level history and science classes in eighth grade, hoping to further prepare them for advanced academic opportunities. Compacting courses will involve training educators and informing students and parents about these exciting opportunities. As these course offerings are finalized, we will be sure to share more details along with our updated program of studies. And then, finally, you have in front of you a binder. Our new board members were provided two binders, one from the 23 school year and one from the 24 school year. This binder contains our strategic monitoring document, which outlines the goals for our division over the span of five years. Some highlights include the adoption of the HMH curriculum, which allows for cross-curricular lessons, use of vector to streamline learning walks and observations, growth of Spark and other professional learning opportunities, the use of Parent Square and other platforms to communicate with families, efforts to increase pay for teachers in difficult-to-fill positions, the ongoing upgrades and replacements to technology, and more. And as the school year progresses, we'll be sure to monitor and refine our practices to ensure we meet our goals. And again, just ending with the calendar so you know what to expect. And are there any questions? Vice Chair Burridge?
So I had a, hold on, let me, before I get yelled at. The flexible seat time that you were talking about
Yes.
to help alleviate the chronic absenteeism. How is that going to be administered in the schools on the weekends?
Well, it all comes down to staffing. So there is opportunity with that all-in funding to provide stipends or pay for teachers who want to work those extra hours to be able to do that. And then, we would have to monitor. So again, in high school, we would need that three hours to equal one day. So even if it wasn't one setting of three hours, and they say they did 90 minutes this day or 90 minutes the next day, cumulatively, we could add it up. So each school will be able to develop their own program of how they administer this extra tutoring in flexible seat time. They have actually already submitted plans, I'm sorry, and have tutors that they have lined up. So we would just document it to ensure the absences are cleared as well.
So we would also do it at the middle school, the elementary school, and the primary school?
Each one of our schools has the all-in funding available to provide that extra support.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I really was happy to hear the report you just gave on the students' achievements from last year. Will you be reporting either in the future or through, I don't know, digital communications growth?
This data does not include growth on the state quality report. I'm looking for Kim Montalvo.
I have the same question more like on trend data, year-over-year, past three years. Do we have triple subjects?
In your packet, there is this included in Tab 1. This is the preliminary accreditation report, which does not include growth, correct? That's what I wanted to make sure. Federal accountability.
Federal accountability does not include growth, but state does. And they're still calling it preliminary, so we should have all of that tied up.
As well, part of, a few slides back, the state is looking at a revised accountability model that will include, like a lot of other states, a component for growth. They haven't landed on exactly the tool to measure that. The state has recently purchased a program that a lot of states have been using for some years called EVAS. Of course, Virginia names everything with Virginia, so it's VIVAS. And we are training internally, as we speak, our staff on how to utilize this tool to measure growth along the way. The magic is in the growth. So that's going to be a part of what you'll see evolve in this upcoming final draft of the state accountability accreditation program.
I also realize you could have just meant regular growth over three years and not growth predicted, you know, from one assessment. In this packet, in Tab 1, under Curriculum, it should be in the back. It shows the three-year, the previous year, and the current year. So if that's what you meant by growth as well over time. Thank you.
And that's also provided on the state's school quality profile. So that's accessible to the public. It is linked on our website.
Now, that one has a disclaimer that that is not updated yet on the school quality profile. We expect that to be updated the end of September.
Kind of along the same lines, the one that stood out to me, the College Career and Civic Readiness Index. So in our instance, and again, it may come up more in looking at the growth, is it more enrollment numbers? Or is it testing scores, if that makes sense, that impact that index? As in, do we not have the students taking the courses, the advanced courses, the dual enrollment courses? Is it an offering limitation? Or is it, no, our students are taking them but are not achieving the scores that would meet a certain threshold to qualify for this index? Does that make sense?
Sure.
Am I doing a poor job? Okay.
We certainly do believe that we could have had higher enrollment in these courses, and that could be part of it as well. But there are indicators of what scores they achieve as well, and just making sure that we know which students don't have that indicator and plugging that in for them because it may not be appropriate that it's an advanced coursework, but one of the other opportunities for them, and ensuring in their four-year time that they are able to check one of those boxes. It doesn't have to be all of those boxes.
One example, it's a confusing index because it measures a lot of options. One is students who take the ASVAB exam, for example. And we noticed from current data that we're having a lower population of students take that exam, and that counts as one of the scores. We could have had five kids take the ASVAB exam, and our number would have been, you know, we're talking about small numbers of kids. So it's a comprehensive index that measures multiple things. We just highlighted tonight because of our College Now thing, one of the things that we'll be focused on in addition to the other things is our dual enrollment and AP participation. But it is a
We should increase that index.
That will increase. Automatically, this number will go up just from this program. But we don't want to put all of our eggs in one basket, so to speak. And that's why the index is important. It allows students who are considering a career in the military to take that ASVAB exam, and then they check that box in this formula as well as the college-bound courses and also career-type certificates that we have multiple kids earning, primarily through New Horizons, but those opportunities are available. And then, an area we're going to also be coming back to you talking about is trying to grow our internships, which checks that box.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have our financial update with Ms. Spence.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board and our school community. For the finance report this evening, I'll be providing some financial updates as well as reviewing information regarding our compensation study. Information has been shared with the city regarding the preliminary fiscal year '24 carryover. In addition, as I previously shared with you last month, there's an additional $560,000 net increase in state revenues available to the school system pursuant to the state's fiscal year '25 finalized budget that occurred in May. Now, once the fiscal year '24 audit is completed, which we're anticipating within the next about 45 days, this is their last week of audit work, we will be coming back to provide expenditure budget recommendations for not only the fiscal year '24 carryover, but as well as the additional fiscal year '25 revenue. As you know, the cost of the compensation study was budgeted for fiscal year '25. Management Advisory Group has been contracted to perform this compensation study on behalf of the school system. The scope of this study includes evaluating every position to determine a number of things: internal equity, reviewing job grades as well as pay ranges, and assigning positions to appropriate grades. It'll conduct a market survey, establish a teacher pay scale that's competitive, and recommend implementation guidelines and project cost. There's going to be six phases to the compensation study. Phase 1 will be the project initiation, which is taking place this week. Phase 2 will be a review of data supplied by staff to the consultants. Phase 3 will be market comparison. Phase 4 will develop updated pay plans. And Phase 5 is the draft report, which we're estimating to be accomplished by December 15. And this will be providing the preliminary budget data for implementation in fiscal year '26. And following that, once this is presented to the board, everyone, and you concur, they'll issue the final project report. Now, we have fiscal year '26 budget coming up. We'll be having our division leadership budget kickoff on October 7th. And October 15th, the budget calendar will be coming to the board for approval from the budget calendar, review the process for the full budget at the next school board meeting. On October 7th, all the planning tools, spreadsheets will be submitted to the principals, the division heads, with a due date coming back November 6. So we have no problem by coming back to the board in January with all this data for a preliminary where we think we're going to land for fiscal year '26. Now, this concludes my report this evening. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll have our operations update with Mr. Roberts.
All right, good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Tillot, staff, and community members. My operations update today will be brief, but hopefully informative to you. So first, we're going to start off with safety, our number-one priority. I just want to mention that this summer, I just want to mention that this summer, all school buildings received additional cameras, and our IT staff works continuously with the feedback of administrators and our SROs and SSOs now to reposition those cameras in a way that it provides more surveillance coverage, and that is a continuous process. We also give access to division-level staff, of course, the building-level administrators, SROs, and the local police. And this is accessible 24/7 through a mobile app. This provides immediate access and will be vital if emergency situations exist. Just as a reminder, we do have ballistic film has been installed in all our schools. This film reinforces glass to prevent entry if it is shot, hit, or damaged. This gives an additional layer of protection to each school and also creates another form of time barrier to slow down any potential threat until support arrives. We continue to conduct our mandatory safety drills. Thus far this school year, all schools have conducted our fire drills, bus evacuation drills, and lockdown drills. Parents are notified by principals regarding lockdown drills via the Parent Square system. Additional drills such as tornado and earthquake will soon be coming, and we continue those required drills like the fire drills and lockdown as appropriate throughout the remainder of the school year. As always, we continue to work with our local fire and police departments to ensure we are ready in case of any emergency situation. The mobile metal detecting system that PHS got from a grant last year will resume shortly. They will be continuing to pick locations and days to implement those scans. The trial run last year went great. We identified some things that we didn't know about the system and to make it a little better. And the practice definitely is going to help the launch this year. So we received an update to the system across the summer. That's going to be downloaded and ready to go, and we'll also be looking at ways to use this in other spaces on campus because of its mobility. One of the points of emphasis for the board tonight is the safety team. Currently, each school has a safety team composed of admin, SROs, and staff, while the division-level team currently includes building administrators, directors, and other division leaders. We seek board approval tonight to add a board member to this team selected by the board and to plan to meet monthly, expanding the team with representatives from various roles such as board members, nurses, counselors, to improve safety practices. This expansion and added members will help us discuss and work through safety issues to enhance our decision-making. Kudos to our SROs and SSOs. They do, or play a vital role in the support for our security. Our SSO has been hired for the primary school, so we're excited to get that person started soon this week, which will further enhance their security along with Pete there as their SRO. SSOs, if you don't know, assist with daily security checks, camera surveillance, tasks assigned by admin and monitoring students. We appreciate our continued partnership with the PCOS and Police Department and our SROs, and look forward to having both SROs and SSOs present at all schools moving forward this week. I think that's a big step for us. I also want to point out with the grants, we have submitted one security equipment grant by the Virginia Department of Education, and we continue to pursue and seek more for technology such as more cameras, weapon detection systems, metal detectors, and other equipment that will be vital for safety. All right, on transportation, I want to give a huge shout-out to the middle school staff and administration to start out with. They created a new drop-off and pickup system at the middle school that I feel has worked rather well. As they worked through the first week of implementation, it did alleviate all the backups off of PCOS and Avenue. So if you were a person in the traffic, you much appreciate that because now you can just zip on through. And we appreciate it in the Transportation Department because it no longer hangs up our buses, which would cause delays at the elementary and the primary schools later on in the routes. We do appreciate the patience for residents living off Popular Street as we worked through those couple first days, but now we have successfully and safely found a way to take all the buses and put it in that loop on the Popular side, so we do not disrupt traffic at any time until we are dismissing the buses, which only takes a couple of moments. And again, thank you to PCOS and PD and the PMS staff for doing that traffic stopping. The PMS parent line has also improved with quick-moving lines, both in the AM and PM times. So good job, PMS. Point of emphasis at PCOS and High School, the stop sign leaving the campus going on an odd road has an ongoing issue where people just kind of run the sign. So we're going to be working with the city to enhance the stop sign and stop line area, as well as the PD coming and helping us implement or enforce that stop sign. So if you're visiting our campus at the high school, please do keep note that as you're exiting, come to a full stop, and then proceed when it's safe. So we thank you for that. Regarding our driver situation, back in last month, I reported that we were in dire need of drivers. Well, we picked up one full-time driver, so we're very thankful for that, and that makes us operational now with everyone where they should be. Our dispatch guy now doesn't have to drive a bus. He can do his job and help the drivers, especially on flood days like today, know their routes and know where to go and where they can't, and communicate. We have one substitute bus driver that can help us out two times a week, and also our Bus Dispatch Joey, who is working miracles right now. He is an all-time sub if we need him as well. So looking way better, however, another shameless plug, if you or someone you know is interested in driving a bus or becoming a bus aide, please have them contact us. We will put you to work. Routes are finalized, so you should be seeing arrival times normalize now. And do be patient. Sometimes, you know, things happen, problems arise, and we have to work through it, which delays buses a little bit. But thank you for your patience for that, and we're always looking to ways to improve the system, both in arrival and dismissals. And yeah, we just want everybody to drive safe. All right, the fireside chat. This went out on social media this past week, and basically what this is, is we want everyone to join us on Thursday night at the middle school. This is an opportunity for a live virtual broadcast from Virginia First Lady Susan Yonkin and also Jonathan Haidt, the author of the book called The Anxious Generation, which this whole talk will focus around how social media and cell phones have kind of, you know, limited our youth and has an impact on them. And it directly aligns with the reason why Executive Order 33 was created, which requires all Virginia public schools to establish cellphone-free policies and procedures by January 1. PCPS staff will be available and present to help lead discussions, answer any questions after the live broadcast. Refreshments will be provided, so we'll have some snacks. And the only thing that we ask is, one, you show, of course, and, two, that you park where the gym is there at the middle school and enter in that entrance, and we'll show you where to go from there. And again, that's Thursday night, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And as always, moving forward, I always kind of like to end on high notes with pictures. So this is the completed playground at the elementary school. As you can see, it's very well-done. I know that I've been over there a couple of times and seen the kiddos really enjoying it. Keith Fieh, I want to thank you very much for continuing to partner with us and inspect these. And as you can see, it's a lovely space with room to expand, which, you know, we're already talking about because we're that excited about it. So kudos to the team for getting that off the ground. All right, and our PPS Pavilion dedication. So this past weekend, the Pavilion, in honor of our Nurse Barbara Riggins, who was a school nurse for many years, who provided for many students, staff, and community her care and love, it was dedicated to her, her family, friends, PPS staff, other PCPS staff, attend at this wonderful event. It was a special moment, and a special thanks goes out to the PTO at PPS and Roxanne Overby, who is very instrumental in getting this off the ground and running. I can't tell you how impressed about the whole process I was when I first started in July. It was like poured footers to this thing, and then all of a sudden, I went back about two weeks later, and it was almost finished. And I was like, holy cow, this thing has moved, and as you can see, it's beautiful, and PPS will get a lot of mileage out of that, I'm sure. So good job. And that is it, unless you have questions.
Just a couple of questions on your school security, safety stuff. The mobile unit we have now, who, what does it take to staff that? Who runs that? Who, Nick, is that like a employee, a volunteer, somebody that trained, something like that?
Yeah, yeah, so all the admin and SROs were trained by the company that provided that. And basically, you just have to devise a system that creates that continuous flow into the device to make sure, you know, they're not cheating, you know, handing stuff off. Certain things, we know that will set it off, like the Chromebook, you know, we'll take and inspect just to make sure there's nothing in that bag. But by and large, you have the student walk through the machine. The machine tells you what needs to have happen. Administrators and SROs will be available right there on the spot, just in case we have to do a search or, you know, take a next step, so.
And kind of more of a budget question, because I've never shopped for one, you know, on Amazon looking for weapons detecting systems. You know, are those like CIP-eligible? I mean, I don't know what the cost is. I don't know if that's more of a budget thing, or is that something you could, like, down the road, if that's where you wanted to expand it for more schools or more sporting events, what the, you know, what you need the budget for that? Is it personnel and the equipment, or both, or?
Yeah, the equipment is quite expensive, I mean, each unit. I can't remember what that one was. I think it was around, what, 12, 15? I cannot remember. Some of that ballpark, just for one unit, for the standalone system. So it is quite pricey. That's why we continue to write the grants and try to fund the money, or find the money for that. But yes, that'll be something, you know, in the future that we'll try to do.
We will probably be bringing a budget agenda item to you to discuss with some details of cost and performance of these devices. As we know, it's, there's some interest in the community, you know, to explore this. We also, as you heard from Ms. Spence's presentation, will be working with the city on some carryover funding, so there may be some opportunity to tap into that fund as well.
Great question.
I had a follow-up question about the safety. You mentioned installing ballistic film. Is that on exterior windows, or is that throughout the entire building?
Yeah, that's mainly on our vestibules and the exteriors, just anything that we know there will be a high spot for, you know, those entries, and we've installed those over the past few years to get that up to speed.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Carroll, do we have public comment?
Chair Martin, we do have two people who would like to speak today.
Okay.
Mike Ship from Dryden Drive would like to speak first.
Okay, well, I'll read the, you're welcome to come to the podium. I'll read my spot, my reading, and then you can, you can start. The PCOS and School Board welcomes public comment during regular meetings. Should school board members do not respond to public comment during a meeting, all comments should address a matter related to PCOS and public schools. The School Board will not hear public comment that involves an individual student-related matter, the disclosure of which would violate applicable confidentiality requirements. The School Board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for students how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. Speakers will address the comments to the entire School Board and not to one individual School Board member, nor to the superintendent, a staff member, or the audience. Speakers are encouraged not to engage in personal attacks. Speakers will present their comments from the podium. To follow School Board policy, time allotted to speakers shall be three minutes. And we have a timer for you. It'll beep at 1 minute.
My name is Mike Ship, and I am here to address an email exchange I had with the School Board. I reached out as a concerned parent and parent of a biracial child at a 10th school here in PCOS, hoping to engage in constructive dialogue about a post on a public Facebook page having to do with systemic racism and implicit bias. However, the response I received was disappointing and frankly unbecoming of an official that is appointed to serve the public. The email I received from the board contains several troubling elements that I'd like to bring to your attention. First, accusation of threats. They stated, "In quote, 'In your latest email, you threatened that my lack of response will cause you to assume that I was not being genuine.' This is both a mischaracterization of my communication and a grossly unfounded accusation. Labeling me as aggressive. The email repeatedly referred to my tone as aggressive, stating the aggressive tone of the email you sent indicated to me that I should avoid meeting you personally under any circumstance. This is an unfair, and this is an unfair and subjective interpretation of my attempt to engage in civil discussion. Dismissive attitude. They wrote, 'My goodness, I am a retired educator and educational policymaker who applied to be a free source of policy expertise to help PCOS and City Schools. This statement comes across as condescending and dismissive of my legitimate concerns, and their history has observed in the post of presenting this topic to their students.' Refusal to engage. The email stated, 'I do not want to meet with you on a personal level, and no offer to set up a meeting was intended. This demonstrated an unwillingness to engage with parents, which is a fundamental responsibility of a School Board member. Redirecting communication. They suggested I share my thoughts of our discussion and consent items with my Western Precinct representatives, and this is nothing more than an attempt for the member to avoid direct communication and accountability for their actions. After this exchange, I requested the board to address this issue, but, you know, about the, but it wasn't about the Facebook post. They said it was about the Facebook post, but it's not about that. This is about the lack of respect and contempt the member of the School Board displayed towards a parent with a legitimate concern, falsely accusing me of threatening them and labeling me as aggressive. As appointed officials, School Board members have a duty to be accessible, respectful, and responsive to all constituents regardless of perceived differences in opinion. This member's actions fell well short of these expectations and standards that citizens of PCOS and expect from those appointed to serve our children. In closing, I'm asking the School Board to reaffirm its commitment to open, transparent, and respectful communication with all members of our community, and to hold one another accountable to the standard of decency we as parents expect from board members. Because remember, although the School Board is not elected by the citizens, they are accountable to the citizens, not to the City Council and not to the superintendent. Thank you."
Madam Chair, the next speaker is Keith Fieh from Willis Court.
Welcome.
There we go. I just wanted to thank the School Board, in particular Dr. Raliffe, who unfortunately is not here tonight, for allowing me to be part of the playground that was built at the elementary school. I did an inspection on the playground back in '22, and then '23, and then another update this year, and I think I addressed the School Board last year saying that the playground at the elementary school definitely needed some more activities to keep the children engaged. And then Dr. Raliffe went out and found a bunch of money. And was he able to get it? I was a little disappointed when I found that he had to leave before it was done. I hope he gets a comeback and a chance to play on. He's about the right size for it, anyway.
I know, I know.
Anyway, it's been, it's been real fun watching it. I fortunately was gone. I went down there before it was finished and got to see the pieces going in, and I can't imagine how they do that. And then when I came back, the first day back, I got a notice from Mr. Andrews saying that it was done. I said, "Well, I can't, I'm kind of out of the country." But I did come back, and the first night back, I went down to look at it, and I asked a specialist that was down there, about this tall, and I asked him what he thought of the playground. He said, "That was great." And I said, "Good, I'm glad to see that." So it's excellent example. It's even better than I thought it was going to be. Hopefully, it'll be enough for the students, and maybe sometime we'll be able to get some more swings out there for the swing set. I also wanted to thank the School Board and whoever put you the spark together was.
Forgive me this nice umbrella. If it hasn't been shared yet, I sent to Mr. Roberts a picture of me when we were on our trip. We went to Ireland, and to Scotland, and to Wales, and to England, and I said, "Surely there's going to be a place where I'm going to need this." And there was one, and that I can stand in front of that item and take a picture of it and pass it on. So hopefully, he'll share that with you. It's a structure you may have seen in books and stuff like that. It's about 5,000 years old, and I'd like to think it lasted long. You stand there, and you look at these stones that were put together by people that, I don't know what they were thinking, other than let's build this thing, and then we look at the playground, and you think, "Well, that's nothing compared to what they put together." But thank you for the, for the umbrella. I put it to good use because it did rain that whole day, as it always does in England, it seems like. But thank you again for my being able to participate in that, and I'm gladly inspect them next year, but now that you got them up and running, you don't need me anymore. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward with our consent agenda. Dr. Burbage?
Yes, tonight for the consent agenda, we have five items. We have approval of financial reports. We have authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with attached requests. We have approval of personnel action, approval of minutes for August's regular meeting, work session, and special-called closed meeting. And then lastly, approval of designee in absence of division superintendent.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second? Any questions, discussions, comments? Ms. Carroll, will you please call for the vote?
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. Dubose?
Aye.
Mr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
A vote of 7-0 passes.
Okay, thank you. Other matters for consideration?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. Oh, sorry, we're going to do that. Let's see, go ahead.
Is there a motion for item A under matters for consideration?
Chair, I move that we approve the proclamation for National School Lunch Week and Bowling Prevention Month.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Ms. Carroll, will you please call for the vote?
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. Dubose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Vote passes 7-0.
Thank you. Thank you.
So now I'd like to make a motion for, to consider Mr. Maxwell for approval to be a school board member to represent the school board on the PCPS Division Safety Team.
Is there a second? Comments or questions?
Do you accept the...
I, I accept.
Okay. Before we vote, I think that's probably important.
Okay. Ms. Carroll, will you please call for the vote?
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. Dubose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Vote passes seven zero.
Thank you. We'll move to communications and other matters by the school board and superintendent, Mr. Lumagi. We'll start with you.
Can you repeat that one more time? I'm sorry.
Do you have your, did you get updates to give today?
Oh, yes, I do.
Okay. Well, now would be your turn to give those updates.
I'm sorry.
No, don't be sorry. It's your first meeting. We're happy to hear those updates now.
Thank you. Shall I stand up there?
No, sir, from your seat is perfect.
Thank you. From the primary school, at Pecosin Primary School, we have jumped right in. We have spent our first couple of weeks building classroom routines, creating our classroom communities, reviewing our school-wide expectation, and getting a big jump on math and other content areas. We have been doing many hands-on activities since day one, which is why it is so important to have your child at school every day unless there are two sick. Last week, we began our literacy instruction using our new HMH into reading materials. Students and teachers are really getting the hang of these new routines and the new materials. We are especially thrilled to use the My Book resources as they are filled with vibrant illustrations of each child and their own copy to follow along with as the teacher reads. We are also working to complete our fall literacy screener for first and second graders. Kindergarten and preschool will begin October. The results from these screeners help us inform our instruction and ensure that we are intervening with struggling readers in the areas for which they need the most help. This Saturday, we dedicated our nurse, Barbara K. Riggins Memorial Pavilion to our big playground, on our big playground. This outdoor learning space has already been used and will continue to be used for students and staff to enjoy the outdoors while they learn, eat, and enjoy time together in a cool and shady spot. We thank again all who donated money for this pavilion, our PPS PTO, and school board for raising the funds and working with contractors, and Blue Water Builders for constructing this awesome space. Please come visit again. Our back-to-school nights are September 23rd for PK and kindergarten and September 24th for first and second grade. These evenings are for parents only as you will spend time in the classrooms, learning about all things PPS and about your child's daily routines and instruction. Also coming up in the first week of October will be our Fall Book Fair. Stay tuned for more information about our family night events. There will be something for everyone. From the elementary school, the new school year is off to a great start at Pecosin Elementary School. Our students and staff have been staying in the green zone by making respectful, responsible, and resourceful behavior choices to be the best in their school. Our positive office referrals are being acknowledged every day, and classes are earning bull bucks collectively for positive class behavior throughout the building. Mrs. Grisco and Mrs. Lamb met with each grade level to review school-wide expectations in our positive behavior assemblies. Classroom teachers are starting their second week of using the new HMH into reading curriculum. We are grateful for our teachers who worked on curriculum writing for reading and math over the summer. Grade levels are meeting weekly to review assessments, unit plans, and lesson plans to prepare for using the new curriculum. Beginning-of-year assessments are starting this week as well. Third-grade students who are new to Virginia or received an invitation to Summer Academy will be given the new VALLS, Literacy Assessment, which was formerly known as PALS. All of our third, fourth, and fifth graders are taking the reading and math diagnostic assessments through ExactPath. These diagnostic assessments take the place of the Virginia SGA. Our teachers will use student performance to determine instructional focus points. We are also enjoying the new playground that opened in the back of the school. This new playground has a lot of climbing options, and students are having fun with it. Ms. Barnes, our PE teacher, is also preparing daily small group game options for students during recess. We are excited to have our SCA, Student Council Association, up and running in the coming weeks. We look forward to the elections and the service projects our students will work on for the school. We also have information coming soon about K Kids, Battle of the Books, and the Great Computer Challenge. We look forward to a great year at PES. From the middle school, Pecosin Middle School is in full swing. Our students have completed diagnostic and student growth assessments for the state in English and in math. They have also participated in three fire drills, two intruder drills, a bus evacuation drill. Safety is key. Our students are collecting Golden Bull tickets for demonstrating our school-wide expectations of being respectful, acting responsibly, and building resilience. The first All-In Bull Teak will be held during lunches on Thursday, September 26th. This is a school store where students are able to redeem Golden Bull tickets for prizes. After school club started meeting this week and student council officer elections will take place next week, we encourage all students to get involved. PMS parents are encouraged to view the back-to-school videos on each teacher's Canvas page if they have not already done so, to learn important information pertaining to each class. And finally, the high school. Pecosin High School is off to a fantastic start for the 2024 to 2025 school year. Our One Lunch Initiative is already proving to be a great success, offering students more flexibility and opportunities to connect. Our freshmen have acclimated to the building in a very positive manner, taking advantage of all the offerings of One Lunch. We're excited to announce that several new clubs are in the pipeline, including the Pokemon Video Game Club and the STEM Club. These clubs are generating a lot of enthusiasm. Can't wait to see what they achieve. This Wednesday, September 18th, at 6:00 PM in the Forum, the School Counseling Department will be hosting Senior Family Night. This event is a great opportunity for seniors and their families to get important... Our athletic program is off to a winning start this season. We're celebrating success in football, field hockey, golf, sailing, volleyball, and cross-country. After two exciting road victories, we look forward to welcoming the community to our first home football game this Friday night. Come out and cheer. Band and cheerleaders are bringing the energy to the field as well. We also want to give a special shout-out to Mrs. Villa Senor and Mrs. Wicker for hosting a fantastic art lesson featuring guest artist Steve Prince from the Muscarrel Museum of Art. Our students are currently working on a community art project that will be displayed at the Muscarrel, and we are excited to see it, to see it come to life. PHS would like to thank the Exchange Club and their volunteers for this updated Freedom Shrine installed in the media center. We will be planning a short dedication ceremony and look forward to sharing photos of the updated Freedom Shrine with the community. Finally, we're looking forward to hosting Homecoming on October 11th and 12th. Mark your calendars. For all things Pecosin High, be sure to check out the Island Times for the latest updates and news.
Thank you, Mr. Lumagi. Ms. Maxwell?
Thank you. I just want to start by thanking all the staff and operations team for a successful kickoff to the school year. Smooth start as a parent, so I'm sure the staff may disagree. It may not have all been smooth, but from my perspective, everything looked great. I also want to give a special thank you to Mr. Tillitt and the school administrative staff for hosting us as we did a tour this past Thursday, got to see all four of the Pecosin School System schools, as well as a tour of the New Horizons facility. I was beyond impressed as a 2004 graduate. It's been about 20 years or more since I've been in many facilities, so it was great to see the improvements and meet the staff working there.
Dr. Goodell?
I want to do, welcome AJ to board. You got your first meeting out of the way, so now you know the ropes. I wanted to thank Mr. Childress and Mr. Ingram for their service and their insight over the years. I also wanted to thank Arti and the administration for forging ahead with the dual enrollment and acceleration. I know I kind of been a thorn in your side a little bit from, from day one on, all that stuff. It's good to see it coming to fruition. It's part of the accountability to help there, but it's going to help a lot. I'm really looking forward to see what we come up with on the other side of that initiative with the employment and the service and the other things we're going to do. You know, high school's an exciting time for these students, and getting ready for the next step is huge, and I think these are all...
Dr. Bartlett?
Thank you. I had the opportunity to go on a tour that Mr. Maxwell referenced, to visit all the schools of Horizons, and it was, it was a really wonderful tour, even though they hadn't barely, they haven't even made a month yet in school. At the primary school, it was full already of student work posted everywhere, really print-rich environment, which was impressive. At the high school, it was my first exposure to One Lunch, and they showed us where this happens, and it just, it looks, it looks like a really forward, modern workspace for people to exchange ideas. I think it's a great, a great process to be using there. On the elementary school, the pictures of that playground, it looked pretty good, didn't it? It did not do it justice. To meet that, that new equipment face-to-face is beautiful. I wanted to get on it. I really did. It was really nice. And the middle school, that's the first time I'd been in the middle school, and the renovation is seamless. If you had not pointed it out to me, I probably, I probably wouldn't have noticed it. So we finished up at New Horizons, and I also, since the last time we met, had the opportunity to attend my first board trustees meeting for New Horizons. And there, it's a fantastic opportunity. I hope that lots of students will participate, and I did get some figures which will, I guess, key into our readiness index for, that you were talking about earlier with the high school. Our, for the governor's school, we, our applications went up and, by nine, and they were all accepted. Every single applicant was accepted, so that's, that's fantastic. For CTE, we had 65 accepted and 49 accepted their acceptance. So I know that's a gap, but that's still nine more than participated last year, so that'll feed right into the readiness index. And so it seems like everything's going swimmingly. I really enjoyed my board tour and the trustees. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
I echo a lot of these sentiments, and also a thank you to Mr. Ingram and Mr. Childress for their years of dedicated service. Welcome to AJ. Great job at your first meeting. I loved your quote in honor of Constitution Day. Very, very well done. Also, to echo Dr. Goodell's comments, I'm very excited about the opportunities I think that will be offered to our PHS students with the College Now, or if that's its final name or whatever it turns into looking like. Really excited to learn more about that as it's created. I think that's going to really be a positive thing for our students. And finally, the PES playground does look great, I have to agree, and the PPS Pavilion does as well. The dedication ceremony for the Pavilion was just very touching. It was a beautiful tribute to a wonderful woman who I knew personally, and I just know our students will enjoy both outdoor enhancements for years to come, so another final thank you to all for the tremendous work that went into both of those. Just, I think they're going to be great.
Thank you. Mr. Dubose?
Want to echo everybody's comments and really just want to make one, one statement, and that is, thank a teacher. Coming from a household and a family of teachers, unless you've been in that or that you're a teacher yourself, the effort that goes into being a teacher is phenomenal. So if you see a teacher, thank a teacher, please.
Dr. Burbage?
Yes, I'd like to, I had a chance on last week to go by the primary school and read for some first graders, and I got there a little bit early just to, so I could beat the buses in, and I got to tell you that Ms. Kason and her staff are very dedicated to making sure that our kids get into school safely, are happy. I mean, there was, there was some strong emotions from some kids getting off the bus, but the kids, they made it in, and they made it to their classrooms. I had a wonderful time reading in, reading to some first graders. It was interesting to see some of the curriculum that they're using, and the kids were all engaged, and it was, it was very informative to me. I'd also like to thank Mr. Childress and Mr. Ingram for all of their years of service. I learned a lot from both of them, so your, your dedication is, thank you for your dedication, Tars. I'd also like to thank Ms. Overby and all the work she did to get the Pavilion put in at the primary school. It is gorgeous. It looks really good. That will be used for years to come, and hopefully some of the kiddos will ask, "Well, who was Ms. Riggins?" And that's where the story will come. She was a great woman. Transportation. Word out to the community, we need substitute bus drivers. You know, our bus drivers, they get sick, have to, you know, doctor's appointments and whatnot. If you're considering it, please sign up. And lastly, want to just congratulate all our teachers and staff for the assessment and the high performance we, our entire school district did. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. I echo the sentiments of my board members. I will say thank you to both Mr. Childress and Mr. Ingram for their service. It's not easy, but they did, they did it valiantly, and we thank them for that. Teachers, administrators, there aren't enough words in, in my vocabulary to thank you for what you do day in and day out. I recently had a child that couldn't go to school for a week, and, you know, I felt that. So I feel you on one little, really small, granular level, but I really can't say thank you enough for what you do. It is reflected not just in our scores, but in the accomplishments of our students. And so, you know, if there's a takeaway, please let it be that we see you, and we know you're working hard, and it's not just the score, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
My turn?
I guess.
Being last, of course, you, most of the things have been said, so I also echo many of the comments made tonight by our board. I would like to also thank Mr. Ingram and Mr. Childress for their service on our board. Hadn't worked with them for, for some time, and appreciated very much their dedication and commitment to Pecosin Schools. Also, we are now entering week four of this year already, and we're off to a great start, but great schools are made up of great people. And I'm in our buildings often and have the opportunity to pop into classrooms, and already we're seeing incredible learning taking place. The kids are happy. It's a, they're, our schools are joyous places, and it's a pleasure to have the opportunity to, to, to visit these extraordinary locations that our kids get to thrive. And so I want to thank our staff from every single member, all 305 people who dedicate their time and energy to making these experiences for our young people so special. And lastly, and also welcome AJ, did a spectacular job tonight. I had the opportunity on Saturday to see the, to participate in the dedication of the Barbara Riggins Pavilion, and Barbara was one of the very first people that I had the opportunity to meet when I came here. I met her, I think, my second day, and she immediately welcomed me to Pecosin and was always kind and helpful, caring to everybody she met. And I miss her, and it was a very special time to be able to see that outdoor space. I know she loved the outdoors, and she would be proud of that place, so, and it was nice to see her family show up for that wonderful dedication. And thanks to Ms. Overby for pushing that through. She did a great job. Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there any other material for board review, Ms. Carroll?
Chair Martin, we have no more material for review.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion for closed session.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion for closed meetings. Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, I move that this board go into closed meeting to consider the assignment, appointment, demotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board, or for discussion, consideration, or interview of prospective candidates for employment.
We will go to closed session. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Carroll, will you please call for the vote? That would help. Thanks, Mike.
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. Dubose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Vote passes seven zero.
Thank you.